I don't, I want to speak for the other two committee members. I think I stated earlier, we went through, I think there's twenty some advocates. We interviewed five. First choice was so easy to make for everybody involved. I don't think we would be able to tell you that the three of us concur on a second or third or fourth. But I like the concept, I think it makes sense. But if you're, I did get a response from Jamie and I apologize, I didn't print the email off. He did have a chance to look at it because I think I emailed Monday and he responded to Steve. And he seemed to be wholeheartedly in favor of it. I don't want the words in his mouth, like I said, I got a two-line email from him Tuesday afternoon.
I was trying to read it out myself. I didn't.
I apologize. If you let me know, I would have hand-delivered your hard copy, I'd have been glad to.
You had the copy before, I was gone last night.
I'd have been even happier to. I tried to go to Pennsylvania to pick up a brush pile that I got an email on last week also, but the mayor overruled my opportunity to take off the brush truck for Pennsylvania.
Well, again, I'm willing to, at least pass what I'm praying for. The others want to do it beyond that, that's fine. I would make a motion if we pass ordinance 2012-13. Because I haven't heard opposition from anybody on first reading.
Second motion.
For the discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passed for first reading.
What's the feeling from you guys on suspending the rules? Does that have to be unanimous?
It has to be unanimous.
Yes. I think Glenn is not comfortable with it.
If you all think it's okay, I'll go with this.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Further discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion for second reading.
Make a motion, we pass ordinance 2012-13, amend ordinance 2011-14, second reading.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Now we have the, is that second reading?
Second.
Okay, suspend, entertain the motion, suspend the rules for third reading.
So.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And third reading. And entertain the motion, that was third reading.
That was not, that was.
Suspend the rules for third reading, okay? Entertain the motion for, for third reading.
So.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passed. Ordinance is official. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. There's a waiver, 2013 budget salaries form one permission. And this is also ordinance number.
Well, I think I have a question on that already, that's in my last, I started to call it. This being my, how should I, page? Session of the city council, it's a little bit like the county council. I don't know if an ordinance number has been issued for the, the Form 1s. You guys got a copy of it in your packets, it was in the binder, the little flat binder. That's the, the Form 1s are in there, but I'm not sure if we put that to an ordinance number. I have to go check the book. I didn't have it in my hearing to do that, so I didn't go down and check it. On the agenda, it just says budget salary for 2013. Now, we do have 2012-9, water, water and wastewater, ten for employee salaries, and then 2014-11 for elected officials salaries, which are also in the packets that everyone is receiving. Tim, I guess my question to you is, can they pass Form 1s on first reading? And then we'll make sure that it has a, it should, I want to say that it should be 2012-8, but I would have to black check.
How long will it take you to find out?
As quick as I walk down there and see, finish your number.
Is your door unlocked?
Yeah. You remember where the ordinance book is?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Ethan was the fire chief, you know?
He is, he's all around, good guy. I even left the door open, that's why you don't even have to break in and just open.
He's got that.
I hope it's the, he's got that, except he needs one.
He's got a match for you too, he's a good man.
Yeah, that's true, he does have that. And he won't even have to get one key out, so. I guess I have to look at that. County doesn't adopt, so they don't put it to ordinance till after, it's not, they have public hearing. No, they haven't. It's been until August four.
I didn't say anything, because I thought Richard had it just a few minutes ago.
And I just kept pulling out the same ones, I wasn't looking at the right, I was, I had all the salary stuff, but I don't have an ordinance for all day. I'm hoping I do.
I have a process question. In order for the salaries and budget to be advertised in privacy plans, then must we pass the Form 1 or budget tonight?
You could have a first and a second reading on the Form 1s at your September meeting. And that would, I mean, that's already going to give you an opportunity. I know I, I looked last meeting, we talked about, we thought we were going to pass on first reading and then have a workshop.
I understand.
Next Monday, so.
And so, yeah, right.
It's kind of a cart before the horse thing anyway, but I think that's possible.
Part of my question, the second part of the question is, once the Form 100 is passed, in terms of the budget, the overall budget, does that put a cap on it then, in terms of the budget?
Once it gets to the third reading, I believe it would.
The third, but I know it's, but the advertised piece.
The advertised piece is, sir.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Because by now this is here for the state employees and then like the, still ordinance that, general, I guess, salary limits that. Those are yours, so I can give it another. Okay, getting back to the next question. No, the advertised amount versus, the advertised amount is only, it's the whole wish list. It's everything that's on the Form 1s right now. So even if you make cuts, it doesn't have to be re-advertised, that part?
Yeah.
Now ask your next question, because I already lost my thought.
Well, my question is, I know we can cut after we say cut, but does that put a ceiling on it when we advertise it? So we can't change it? What if we wanted to go up in some areas?
Can't go above, can't go above the total, so for instance.
The total, the total budget?
Right, so for instance, you could go over.
Line items or, or, okay, yeah.
Right, line items, DLGF does not look at individual line items, they look at your total.
Total, okay.
For instance, we advertised a Form 1s at six million ninety-four, six million ninety-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, we, we need to adopt somewhere around 5.7. So that's like $300,000 in cuts. That's what the DLGF is proposing. Between 2012, what we return and what we were going to spend in 2013, we need to cut approximately $300,000 in the general fund. That based on what was advertised.
Question.
We can, in 2012, we were approved at 5.6. The council actually adopted a budget at 5.8. So, but the good news about that is, we returned, and I gave you guys a copy of this if you want, I dug it out in the archives. We returned 653,000, plus or minus, from 2011 into 2012. So we returned more than what we have to cut. Does that make sense to everybody?
And we've been doing that, saying that every year.
And it's consistent. And we were, we were like, we, we returned, in 2008, we returned 829,000. 2009, we didn't return back as much because we actually were in deficit because of the way the tax collections came that year. But then in 2010, we turned around and had that amount, so it equaled out to about 900,000 we returned in 2009 and 10. And then our revenues are down, so that's why we probably, you know, and if we had more expenses, we'd return 653,000.
So returning, meaning we did not spend.
Meaning we did not spend it.
We did not spend general funds.
We did not spend appropriations in the amount.
It's put in different funds, they're, they're looking for you.
No, it's all general funds. It's everything, everything I mentioned tonight is just general fund, that's the big.
I don't come right off the bottom line.
Isn't that correct, Richard? They, they look for you to be broke at the end of the year.
Yeah.
And when you're not, you can take that.
They're telling you what you can, what you can spend in break even. So you can spend, 2013, you can spend 5.794 in break even.
And we've asked the, the department heads to cut their budget by 10%. It's going to be around 600,000.
So potentially, we could return 568,000 if everybody does 10%, potentially. I can give the, the ordinance number if we want to look at Form 1 and, and the three salary ordinances if we want to. It'll be 2012-14, the Form 1s, Glenn. Thank you, Scott, wherever you went, hope I see you back. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, you do have it there.
It's the first time, it just doesn't have the ordinance number listed in there. That's why I was kind of conferring with Tim, but.
Does everyone feel comfortable with moving on the first reading for this evening?
I'm fine.
Yeah, if we're going to second, maybe in September, the third, we have to finalize by November or October?
October last year.
October, you want to adopt before November?
We had a special meeting coming to adopt it on the day before, the day of last year.
And salaries is not absolutely there until the end of the year?
And salaries are part of the Form 1s, so we do have separate salary ordinances, plus you have, everything is in the Form 1s.
Is it also, or are they just elected officials till the end of the year?
Elected officials.
To, to your question on the Form 1s, I don't know that it matters. I, I am unaware of any ordinance form Greensburg that requires you to read, to do three reads. We talked about this in class. It's more a custom of the council. The statute reads is, for ordinance purposes, it has to be, it had, I'm paraphrasing, but it has to be presented and approved more than once, usually twice. Or, in, in this particular circumstance, Greensburg prefers to do it three times. So, as far as staying within the law, I think you can treat this as an introductory phase. Pass it on the second, third reading and still be not only within the spirit of the law, but within, in the letter of the law. And in the spirit of how customarily it's been presented in the past. I mean, that would be my approach on this, on that issue.
Hope we can make the first and second. Yeah, in September, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And keeping within the same.
Yeah.
Technical parameters, but really within the, within the laws quite so.
Correct. Okay, I think I entertain a motion to pass on ordinance 2012-14, the salary and Form 1 information. For the budget, annual budget.
Well, okay. Actually, if we do that, we're, we're making nine, 10, 11 kind of moves.
Yeah, well, I think we shouldn't include all of them, nine, 10, 11, and 14.
Why don't we just take one at a time? Do, do nine, 10, 11, and then 14. Man?
Well, as I said, they're, they're kind of milked after we did the first one. So, if we do them all once, we do it one reading.
Yeah, so it'll be utility salaries, city employees salaries, elected official salaries, and then Form 1s, 2013 budget Form 1.
Get off that.
We do.
It's up, it's up to the council, however you want to do it, but you can do the whole Form 1 reading.
I think for the benefit of anybody listening, we ought to really state what's in these different ordinances that we're passing, and what, what amounts to in broad terms, at least, knowing full well that this is setting out a high watermark, and not necessarily a definitive or ending watermark. In terms of, in broad terms, what we're talking about is water and wastewater, employees, pretty much things stay the same, except for salary, salary, or wages would be increased by roughly $500. And that would also go for the city employees, the, what we're proposing in terms of the appointed officials. It's being proposed here as a $1,200 increase. What's being proposed for, looks like we're, we're adding another rank here, CDL driver rank, is that right? No, that's been in there, it's been in there? Okay. And we're proposing elected officials and full-time elected officials, salary, mayor and clerk treasurer being increased by $1,200 in a proposal in terms of the council of $1,000. Again, keep in mind that that is a high watermark in order to try and begin, knowing we're not going to go over that. Obviously, from what we just heard, we're going to have to find some ways to pin the budget. And obviously, salary is one of the major parts of our budget, so we're going to have to find ways to make some adjustments overall, both in salary and in other places probably. So that's what we're, that's what we're voting on here tonight. And in terms of the overall budget, we'll have to start on that, meetings are getting ready next week.
Okay, so that would be ordinance 2012-9, 10, 11, and 14.
Make a motion that we pass ordinance 2012, 9, 10, 11, and 14, first reading.
Second. For the discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Hearing that, passed the first reading. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item. Bring you up today, there is a conference call this next Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. And Scott, Scott, are you aware of that, of the conference call next Monday morning?
Is that first to?
The burn ban?
Yes, 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 yes.
And it's going to involve BMA and the commissioners, myself, BMA, back to the council. To decide then, what they're going to do, if we get more rain, there's enough moisture in the ground and the grass, they may consider looking at that time. But that's all dependent on if the rain will get between that and there. And then, Daryl, would you like to put in the board of vice president?
Absolutely. Mark Klosterkemper and the city attorney opened bids for the dump truck that was put up for bid. The winning, the high bid went to Walton Wharf with $2,510. And new business, Melanie Maxwell, Fall Festival approached us with some ideas that they had and some intentions that they have. This year, they're going to want to close the entire square. Fall Festival will only be on Friday and Saturday, will not be on Sunday this year. And I think I gave you all some lineups, schedules. We approved a block party, street closing, and rile addition. And Stacy, we approved to purchase a Ford utility vehicle and three Dodge Chargers. This was in the annual program that she has where she keeps the cars rotated. And in doing so, they'll be financed through.
For the federal.
We talked about the attorney contract. We amended that contract to where Tim will receive one half and Chris Stevens will receive the other half, as we discussed last week.
For the remainder of the year.
For the remainder of the year. That's it.
Is there anything in the audience? John Dooley?
Just going to give you a very brief report here this evening. For the record, John Dooley, on behalf of the airport board. By Indiana code, the airport board is an executive board, appointed by the mayor to oversee the operations and development of the airport. Before you, what I've handed out is a copy of the legal notice that was published in the Greensburg Daily News on July 13th for the public hearing for the environmental assessment. The EA draft, it's been two years in the making, been working on this a long time. And it's a required step in the federal funding for the new runway at the airport. Public hearing examiner, at this time, will collect recorded verbal and written comments from the public about the environmental assessment. And of course, all comments will be evaluated and addressed in the final environmental assessment copy. Below there, you'll see a written-out link where you can go on the internet and get a PDF copy of the environmental assessment draft. It's a lengthy document, 195 pages, and that's why you have a link there. You can also get copies at the front desk, but it's a rather large document. In the draft, it assesses water quality, wetlands, wildlife habitat, floodplains, air quality, noise, farmland impact, arqueological studies. It's a very comprehensive document. Input comes from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Department of Environmental Management, NDOT, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and of course, it includes the process for determining the length of the runway. The reason for the project, of course, is to bring the municipal airport up to federal standards. Standards for the length, width, and protected areas around the airport and runway. And of course, to make it accessible to business industrial traffic. Transportation infrastructure like airports, interstate highways, railroads, they're key to attracting businesses and industry to the community. And we only have to look 20 miles to the north to our neighbor to see what it would be like to not have these assets. The airport continues to cover its operating expenses through the revenue generated from fuel sales and hangar rentals, and they require no, currently require no money from the community for state-of-the-day operating expenses. And again, that's, like it's listed, it's next Tuesday away from tomorrow at this location. So, want to make sure everybody was aware of our public hearing. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, gentlemen. Department heads, everything? Anyone else in the audience?
Mayor, just briefly, I, I think I, I give it to council, there was, there was a question about the changes to the open door laws that were in effect in July. I presented council, I hope everyone had got a copy of PowerPoint and, and copy of the changed law. I think, there was a question, and I think Glenn asked it maybe in June, as to what if any of those laws, A, would impact this body, but any other bodies? And, and I think, I think my response to the time is probably correct yet today, that there's, there's little that's changed with respect to the ODL law, especially as it affects elected officials, upper management, public officials, those sorts of things. If you're found to intentionally violated the ODL, then yes, you are now subject to a fine that's up to $100 for the first time, and then up to $500 every other time. I've spoken with the public access counselor, the chances of that happening, you would have to egregiously violate the open door laws for that to happen. And, and they don't expect that to happen unless there's just a, you know, a major or a deliberate effort to keep information out. And even the public access counselor just has a tough time envisioning that happening. So, so I don't, I don't think anybody, certainly elected officials don't have anything to worry about. And really, it would only be those responding employees or upper level employees that would be subject to anything of that nature. And then, really, the only other major change is, they've now incorporated what was the custom, was you had to respond within a reasonable period of time upon receiving the request, before it was never really set out as to what was expected. But those are, I just wanted to touch base with you on those, on those two points, which were the two points that the public access counselor wants everyone to be aware of. And other than that, I think it pretty much stays the same and operated as ever passed.
Another thing that was in there as well was, do people request to be notified at the agenda?
There is, yeah, there is that, the, you know, forever, the media has had the opportunity to say, to request to be notified of all public meetings. And now, if, if you put it there to be notified, but they have, they have to comply with the statute in their request, but they, they will be made part of the list that is notified of public meetings and.
And really, we already do that, many people ask to be, agenda's, put them on the list.
Yeah, with email, it's, it's, I think, that's, that's sort of what, what the purpose for that law is, it just makes it so much easier.
But now, let me ask you a question, is it by email only, or do you have to mail it if somebody doesn't have a computer?
Mayor, I have to look directly at the statute again. Yeah, I have to look directly at the statute again, but I, I don't even know if they specify what they want, I, I'm not so sure that, uh, if you don't make the effort. I, I have to look at it again, but I'm not so sure that, that the city can designate how the, how the response would be. So, but again, it, yeah, yeah, most communities are gonna accommodate.
Anything else, here in entertainment, open to?
I just, it might be worthwhile, we brought, I brought it up here a couple of times, and we, as a council, have, um, wanted to pursue something, but we can't, could've locked, break a wall with it, and that's the four twenty-one intersection, I think it might be.
Gary, would you like to report on that? The four twenty-one intersection, what they've really given us, other than lighting, nothing?
I think, uh, they know on everything.
We did, yeah, we did a follow-up with, um, the lining of it, and they shot us down there, um, the lighting would be only at our own expense, and I'm not sure that that's been worked even for what we're probably, we're looking at, so, I just think it's one of those things that we tried, and, uh, and I have to look at what is.
And one thing that is going on, Honda lighting, that intersection out there?
Yes, we've, we've been working with Honda as part of the Honda tip money to add six street lights out at the Honda employee entrance, as well as a traffic signal. Uh, they're looking at adding an additional inbound and outbound lane, and they, that's gonna be paid for by Honda. But they're having to make that pitch to their upper management, we should find out by the end of this week, whether they're going to be adding that, and then that'll weigh into the signal design, traffic signal design that will be put out there, that they request.
Should make a save on it. Anything else, council? You're gonna entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.